Regularly scheduled for a selectmen meeting for Monday, April fifteenth, otherwise known as tax day. To order, Charles, if you would, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public forum, anyone wishing to address the board in public forum and see anybody here on Zoom. I know we have some members of the public here, but that's because that individual has to make a presentation. Or request of this hearing, let's move on to item three. But before we do that, the topic of the of the week or the days is obviously the grass shack. Grass Island Shack, which collapsed on, we think it was Thursday night to this Friday morning. And I think Janice will have an opportunity to talk to us a little bit about that. And we'll change her presentation on the MS four compliance, so we'll talk a little bit about the. But what we're going to try to do with it. All right, approval minutes, April one, twenty twenty four minutes, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second, second, comments, questions, suggested changes, et cetera. Hearing none, let me try your mind, second, Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. That most carries. Item four, finance director, Mary Jean, come on down.
So we'll start with revenues, we are ninety eight point seven percent collected through March thirty first. Just shy of where we were last year at this time. You'll see that there are a few departments that are have already brought in more revenue than budgeted. We've been speaking about interest income. If you extrapolate where we are today through the end of the year, we could be approximately one point one six. Obviously, our interest goes down a little bit the second half of the, you know, the fourth quarter. As we are starting to spend down the taxes received in January. So I expect that to come down a little bit over the next couple of months, but we most likely will at least reach the one million mark at that point. At the very bottom, the other departmental, it's where you see some of those additional revenues that are coming in this year from the state that were unanticipated and we do not expect to come in next year either, so. Any questions on revenue?
Can't you explain the selectmen, is that obviously?
Oh, the selectmen's revenue is thanks to surplus products that we sell through gov deals. Lot of items specifically public works, but other other departments use it as well. It's a way that we can legally dispose of items that we no longer need or looking to replace, it's kind of like an eBay or it's a bidding platform called munisabid that we use. And it's been very fruitful for us.
So let's choose both work through, let's assume a piece of equipment. So rather than trading something in, we sell it and it ends up on a order selectman line item rather than just going right towards whatever piece of equipment.
It typically does, it typically does, but if you remember last month, we spoke about an item that that Dave feels that we can receive more money through munisabid than it would be if we traded in and we're going to look at that. Correct, so therefore, if you choose to, we can transfer that money and and use it against that expenditure. But otherwise, the revenue would come in in this fashion. But we can always move it.
Question is, why are we assigning it to the selectmen's office and not to public works?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get to, and when is that that adjustment going to be made so we can get more realistic?
And and we can, well, what happens is typically we have a lot of small items, it could be all over the place, we're not moving money here here and there, but but like I said, like we said, the last meeting, we can certainly do that, you know, for for these vehicles.
My biggest struggle is when you get down to the town total. I mean, if you take two thousand twenty seven thousand four hundred and seventy two point four percent out, what does that do to the hundred percent average?
Well, very little because the budget's only a thousand, so your budget's only a thousand, which is why it's showing so large, but it's it's hardly going to touch the bottom line percentage. Because it's a it's a percent of a small dollar amount. You know, it's it's like saying the assessor's office hasn't brought in all their revenue because they're only at fifty two percent, but their budget's only twelve hundred. You know.
So it's forty seven dollars a percent of a thousand.
Yes.
Which is seventy seven dollars.
Correct, exactly right, exactly right. We did.
It's one day more.
Put it against capital to me.
We absolutely can, we absolutely can.
Well, and what we did last week was, that's last week, last month, two weeks ago, I think it was. Maybe even longer, on the approval of those three Mason dump trucks to use through munisabid, we were purchasing two replacement vehicles. David had done the homework, the trade in value was nominal, so we wound up, I think, over the last two weeks selling all three of them. And all around the twenty thousand range, so somewhere in that number, so that will go directly to offset the cost, much like a trade in.
Correct, because we spoke about that and that's the decision that was made, correct. But on a regular basis, you know, most times we're just selling things that we no longer need, we're not replacing them. So it's not going against an expense, it's not offsetting an expense. In this particular case, because of what we're purchasing and and the revenue that would be coming in, you know, we've chosen to do that, but we certainly can. You know, it overall, at the end of the year, the money is
Money falls.
You know, falls on balance regardless of which side it's on, so. Absolutely, we can do that.
And in this case, we are diminishing the amount of ARPA funds that we're going to be using to purchase these trucks, right?
Correct.
All right. Anything else on revenues?
All set, I guess he's all set. All right, on the expenditure side, seventy five percent through the year, we are seventy five point seven percent expended. Most of our departments are absolutely within range, as I normally say, the ones that are far more expended are items that we have to spend at the very beginning of the year, timing like insurances and and things like that. Otherwise, most of the departments are pretty much where they should be at this point. You'll see that capital, the capital is overdrawn, but that's because we have items that are becoming in from fund balance. And we did approve the changes to the debt service, that'll be reflected in April, so. You have any specific questions on expenditures?
Fire is still a little bit above?
Little bit above.
Replacement salaries?
Yes, so they are they are almost completely spent with replacement salaries at this point.
Any significant concerns there?
Not really, we're been trying to keep that down as much as possible, we have ARPA funding that we're still giving them to offset that this year, so.
We haven't moved those funds yet?
They 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 do get moved on a monthly basis, so that is there.
Anything further?
On the medical side, you'll see for March, claims were almost one point five million as we look at our crystal ball, we expect that these numbers for claims will increase the second half of the year since employees have paid off their deductible. And that number just shows that that is most likely the case at this time. Overall, our catastrophic claims, we're only at nine percent expended, we did have a pretty large jump there as well. Seven hundred thousand dollars, and you can see that we're increasing that amount covered by ISL. This, in the month of April, we have started to receive all of those reimbursements back from the stop loss as we've talked about in other times, so we have that coming through as well. Our revenue as always is pretty steady on the medical side, we are projecting a surplus at the moment of five hundred and eighty nine thousand dollars. And that's been going down month after month.
As you've warned us based on the deductibles.
Correct.
All right. Now, twenty five covered members over the seventy five thousand?
Yes, so the right, so we're five additional covered members since the month before. And three additional members being now paid out through stop loss from prior prior month.
How does that compare to other years?
Um, I'd have to look at, I don't know specifically, but we always tend to start out really slow. And then it starts to ramp up the last couple of months, it's it's really, the number of members has really increased, it's it's really hard hard to say. You know, it's it's an area where it's hard to compare year to year because one bad claim could change the whole makeup of the fund, so.
Yeah, that's that line item is just a morally confusing line item. We we want to, we want to maximize what we're getting from the insurer, but that means that more people are much sicker. So that's where, yeah, every time we talk about whether or not we should be moving the the number on the ISL. And should we be having the ISL?
Yeah, and we're going to be having those discussions on the the amount that kicks in for ISL, those are discussions we're having on this year that would affect next year, and when we look at what we're budgeting, we we never know who has any type of claim, that, you know, we don't, we don't know who, but we do know what the claims are. So we can, we make a judgment call sometime to say, I'll give an example, if somebody has a really bad pregnancy, that could put them in ISL, well, we can make an assumption that that's not going to happen the following year. So we can say, okay, we can take that claim out of our projections for the following year. If it's cancer related, we might say, all right, that's something that will continue, we're going to keep that in. So again, we don't know who, but we know what, so we're able to use that information to to try to make the best decisions that we can moving forward with medical, but one thing happens and excuse the whole picture.
Picture, that's right, and and again, that's a line I hope you don't have to use, it's sort of like homeowners insurance. No one would would maximize your return on your homeowners insurance. Anything else on medicals? Good morning.
Made it.
How are you feeling?
Oh, wonderful. I don't have my board pack because I thought I was going home, so.
You can take it, I've got paper copy, but.
Decided misery loves companies. No, it's not, it's not.
Yeah, her phone's going to count if she's still on the scene.
I didn't say.
Well, it's going to count if you're still on the scene.
Okay. Anything you wanted to talk about with the multi-year capital project, which is, I know that's there normally because you report out quarterly to report.
Right, it's just our quarterly report, everything seems to be in line. No, we we haven't closed them out, we're kind of waiting closer to the end of the year, so just in case something else comes up, we can do it all at one time. Thank you.
Nothing further?
Thank you.
Item five, recreation director, Gary. Five dot one is consider to take possible action on a change order for pickleball court project at Bitter Park to be paid out of the recreation. Good morning.
Good morning. Good, thank you. So you all know that Bitter Park is from a project that I have inherited.
Yes.
And I have just recently learned that there was a, there's been a few change orders in the fall that the town went forward with, but there's also a change order with the painting because they have to shot blast it, first, I've never heard of that. But it's it's basically because the state park is a smooth cement surface. And with the pickleballs, that new pickleball courts that have already been completed and painted, they did shot blast those. And it makes the surface a little rougher and it keeps the paint on the surface better. So they, I guess Rick knew in the fall that they would have to shot blast the basketball and the new courts, pickleball. And along with that, they also had widened the post tension. And that created a joint or a seam, if you will, and that has to be repaired. And his professional opinion, Tom Hinding, who's doing the courts, is to do a right way crack system. And that will give us at least a two to three year warranty. And that will be coming out of the program funds as well. Because we'd like to get that painted and complete.
Yeah, so people can start to use it.
So they're using it still, regardless, but and they do look fantastic if you haven't seen them. The wind screens look amazing, we're very happy, but waiting.
So these are the new, the new, more pickleball courts that have been added to existing.
The additional, correct, three, and then they're also painting the basketball court as well with pickleball lines as well, so they can use those as additional.
With the temporary nets, yeah.
Yeah.
Got it.
Interesting to see, I know you don't have this, but the total we've spent on pickleball, so it's not going to get interesting.
I believe it was one forty four was the original.
All over.
The the original four, yeah.
Yeah. I could get those.
Yeah, the original four plus the the new ones were just just.
Yeah, I can gather that and send an email to to all of you, that would be great.
Sure. And part of the refurbishment of the courts, Adam's courts. Yes, I mean, they they reached a lot of things, but they made better markings for the pickleball, you know, some other improvements, so probably not that much money, but a little bit more to make it easier for pickleball players as well as tennis players.
Right.
Are the pickleball programs? I mean, I know a lot of them are fairly organized, so you know how many participants are in those, but are they also random randomly used?
Yes, huge drop in, yeah, it's a big, big drop in.
So we don't really have a handle on numbers of participants at this point.
I understand there's a Teensters app that has about three hundred and fifty members. And and this is basically just a way for people to understand when people are going to be down there to play, an open play. And so it's it's not, it's not organized, we're not reserving the courts, it's still dropping.
Would the three hundred and fifty be in addition to the organized number?
Yes.
What's the organized number?
That I do not know, however, I do know that all our pickleball lessons, which would be are organized. And from what I understand, they're always full. So it would depend on the teacher ratio to students, but very, very popular. From beginner to intermediate to advanced.
As you, as as we may recall, there were at least two budget cycles where we were exhorted to create more, that was the most, that was the biggest input we got was, we want more pickleball courts.
Well, I just remember the same cycle with the disc golf. You know, I I don't have a problem with any of it, but I mean, we're talking maybe a thousand citizens use the whole all facility.
Yeah, it's a hard, it's a hard to gauge, however, I can tell you it was a very, very cold day the last time I went up to meet the vendor up there and every single court was full. And then in the past, on one of the weekends, went up to kind of hit a ball around, I was very surprised to see that the skate park was being used, basketball was being used, and all the courts were being used. So it's.
Probably encourage people to get out and get away from the screens and everything.
That's right.
But, you know, you got to put it in perspective for you to say they're full, it mean you're talking twenty five people.
Now, this is, the pickleball is.
Oh, at that given point, which is up there, they're full, it's six courts, fearful people.
Janice and I were up at the hazmat collection on Saturday, and it was a pretty brisk and overcast morning. And a bunch of the pickleball, a bunch of the pickleball folks, you know, coming through, even though the park was closed.
As well as disc golf people too.
The recently had a call from one of the one of the owners of the Blaze Pickleball that was in Walmart site, they're looking for a facility, another facility in Guilford. Because apparently the success of their program was such that and that's for people who are willing to pay to play. So I think the it's also an orthopedic surgeon's, particularly for those of us older certain. The the injuries are are significant, but anyway, is there a motion to approve the change orders? A second, any further comments or questions?
We had comment that it's being paid for from the program, which is appropriate because that's where the money, it's where the money's going, it's perfect, perfect, you said it.
All right, let me try your mind, second, Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carried, thank you. All right, item six, tree advisory board, Siobhan Towers, and Kevin, you going to come up with it? Come on.
I'll leave soon.
For those of you who don't know, Siobhan has been a longstanding member of the Tree Advisory Commission or Committee. Committee. Tab that. And the floor of services.
I've not been through this process, is everybody read this?
Yes, we haven't, this was in our packet, yes.
Okay, I assumed, but I didn't want to.
Presume.
So we hope that you think that this is a good application of the ARPA funds, I think it would be an enormous enhancement for business environment. And it may there lots of environmental reasons for doing this, as well as general beautification, but I understand the ARPA funds are for recovery and we do think that this will help significantly.
And your proposal is above a hundred trees to plant one hundred trees, and just for those, and as those interviewing audience don't have access to this, so, you know, on what routes and where? And then, you know, why why are we doing this?
Why are we doing this? Well, we're doing this because culmination of what Kevin has to take down for hazardous trees and what Eversource has to take down for trees in the way of their wires, we're losing in the vicinity of three hundred trees a year. Maybe more. And we're planting tan, and those tans do not come from the tan, they come through the Guilford Garden Club's private donations, and those are restricted to the immediate area around the green, considered the village, I think that's a legal term, but and what's happened, not only are these funds available, but more importantly, the state and Kevin's worked hard with this counterports, the state took out and understand the new parameters. They used to not let us plant on the public right of ways, and they've changed that policy so that with actual minimal work on our part, we believe that we can go in, and so all of a sudden, seventy seven, one, one forty six. All of those streets that we couldn't plant on before, we now can. Even going back decades ago when Shirley was doing planting, everything had to be off the right of way, and if we can plant within the right of way, both it'll be more immediately effective and it'll have a traffic coming effect as well. So we now have this opportunity that was missing before, and we really can affect how people approach town of Guilford and understand its quality.
A lot of the trees that have to come down lately are whether they're diseased, the ash trees and that type of thing. What kind of trees would you be planting, are they more along? I don't know if this is the correct word, but little maintenance type thing, ornamental type?
Well, actually, the ornamentals.
Got the pears and cherries.
The majority of the trees we would plant would be larger canopy trees, which of course, when we're in the right of way, means we have to be out one side or the other, outside underneath the wires. But they are going to live three or four times the length of a smaller ornamental tree. So the long, and the investment initially for planting is the same, so they have a much greater long term impact. They'll get bigger and affect the scale of the spaces, they actually are in many ways lower maintenance than some of the ornamentals. So we think that it's a much more effective use of the funds, that said, we still would use the ornamentals where they're appropriate, at least in the short term on the green, and we have to use a small to medium sized trees if we are planting underneath the wires. Right tree, right place for those, but.
That's, this is an obvious question, and I'm sure the board has considered this, but we've been dealing with it in other ways in the last couple of years. Do you work with Eversource in terms of where they're putting new new and or higher poles?
We try, they they will say they've been probably more responsive to Guilford than they have to other tans. We try to work with them in terms of pruning, whole placement is really not within our purview.
Because you hate to see, you know, a nice new tree planted and then they come along in a year and say it has to come out.
I, it is a good point, and I think we should verify with
I realize.
Eversource, well, but I don't know where their new reboarding is and it isn't. And it probably affects these streets in ways that it it might not in other places, so thank you, we'll do that.
I'm wondering about the timing, both the timing of tree planting and the timing of all the ARPA fund requirements, how would that work? Would you plant them in fall, could you possibly do them all in one season?
We were hoping not to do them in one season, you have to tell me when these funds run out.
As long as we have, as long as we have it covered, a purchase order, a purchase order against the.
We can, we would
By December.
To do them at least fall and spring, I mean, some trees shouldn't plant in the in the fall or or vice versa. But we would hope to, we we could certainly bid it all out, as you said, you would hope, we would make sure that the bids included the first year of maintenance so that there's no but the larger we bid out, obviously, the better price we're going to get, so, yeah.
Just two cycles.
It it is, I mean, we had originally hoped for three cycles, and again, I'm not sure if we want to bid out for more than a year in advance, I'm not sure anybody's going to want to bid out more than a year in advance. But we could certainly try it, I mean, in in an ideal world, we had discussed three installations.
Well, the requests were to the anticipated trees, which includes delivery, purchase, delivery, and then also installation. Who are we utilizing for the installation, or is this, is it have to go up a bit?
This is something I probably look at, there's so many trees there to put a burden on one agency. So if you're looking, probably with a bid for installation, one thing we're considering, especially best buy for the trees would be does the town get them to a wholesaler, get a agreement with a wholesaler for the purchase of a hundred trees. And then get another, like you said, person to install who will also be also responsible for the long term maintenance of, or the year maintenance of watering trees.
That way, we also get to control more the quality of what we've bought.
Any other questions? All right, is there a motion to approve the this project utilizing ARPA funds, and I think you've got a range of sixty to sixty five thousand, so at this point, not to exceed sixty five thousand. Utilizing art of funds and I think you've got a range of sixty to sixty-five thousand, so at this point not to exceed sixty-five thousand. Is there a motion?
Some.
Second, further comments or questions? Let me try your mind, select from Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room? Thank you very much. Thank you for the work you do all the time.
Well, we try, actually I thought just because I don't think you've seen.
And thank you for the materials you provide.
When we do plant now, we deliver letters to the homeowners and the abutting properties and then sometimes they don't like it or they want to move it or whatever. So sometimes we don't plant, but we would be doing the same sort of thing and in that case we credit the garden clubs, but in this case we'd be crediting.
Thank you, Shiva. Well done. Okay, item seven, Board of Education, Cliff Gurnum, seven dot one, discuss to take action under recommendations standing building committee to reward bid number seven dash two, three, two, four. The five ninety-five New England Road renovation project. Good morning, Cliff.
Good morning.
How are you?
How are we this morning? Good. So we did go back out to bid again for the five ninety-five project to ensure that we were following all the town policies, procedures and made sure that we did have prevailing wage within the, the project itself. We had most of the same bidders or actually all the same bidders as the prior bids. So there was no change in bidder companies as far as who bid on the project. We did have some of the smaller pieces of the project not bid on, so those sections that were not bid on, like for example, painting may not have been rebid during this bid phase. So we went back to the prior bid that had prevailing wage in it and we brought them into the equation, we'll say. So we did go through the whole bid with the standing building committee and the results. So after final review with them, they did recommend moving forward with a contract with the construction management firm ORNL, who we've hired to BRCM in the amount of two million, two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars. We presently have bond funding for two million, nine hundred and eighty million dollars, so we do have sufficient funds to do the project. Unfortunately, every time we go to rebid, the numbers do not go down, they go up. So we're hoping to accept and award this project and get it moving so that we can potentially be in by the fall.
All right, Cliff, thanks for bringing this back, I know that we had some challenges with it earlier with particularly related to prevailing wage, which has the capacity significantly increase costs. So the original, the original allocation of bond fund in twenty twenty-three, that plus the commitment from town fund balance, was that the original estimated cost about two million for the project?
The original cost back when in the inception of the project was just under a million dollars. The first bid of the project came in at one point six and it's escalated from one point six up to where we're at now since twenty eighteen.
And refresh my recollection, if it was under a million, did that mean the original that we did not anticipate prevailing wage? Is that why?
Correct, that's how we got into that predicament originally, yes.
Got it. Okay, any comments or any questions?
I'm wondering about Cliff, how this bid compares to the last numbers that were presented to us, which I think was about three months ago, two or three months ago. I know, I know the increase was, I guess, because prevailing wage wasn't considered in the first round. Were there any other reasons for other increases? You know, the same bidders coming back with higher numbers for other reasons?
What exactly is the difference?
Yeah.
The difference wasn't huge, I think we went up another hundred thousand, hundred fifty thousand since the last prevailing wage bid that we did, so it did go up a little bit and yes, we had a couple bidders that whether it's inflation or whatever, they bid higher numbers, so like I said before, unfortunately, every time we bid this, we're not getting more aggressive numbers, they're actually going in reverse.
So this is two point three, do you, can you refresh our memories about what the last set was?
If you want the actual number, if you hold on a second, I can actually pull that up, yeah. So the prior bid according to my notes was two million, fifty-five thousand and seven dollars, so we've gone up approximately almost two hundred fifty thousand dollars since last time, yep.
And for the project in total, including all the finishing and the furnishings and the equipment and everything, do you have a current idea? I guess where I'm going is if we had known back at the outset that it was going to keep growing and growing and growing like this, would we have come to a different conclusion? You know, it's impossible to say, but it's kind of taken on a life of its own here.
Well, and to add to that discussion, you know, sure, we can look backwards and what, what if, but the struggle I have now is we're at the peak of all, we're at the peak of inflation, we're at the peak of construction costs and can't really wait, I mean, you got something that should have, could have, ought have, but not. I just really have gotten caught on this.
Not to quibble, but I, I think the project in itself is something that we have all supported, the centralization and the use of that, the concept. But your points I'll take, and had we done that, that, that we know it was gonna be this, this expensive, would we have gone forward with it?
Yeah, that building is a place, I mean.
And by the way, there is some side benefit to the balance of the community. We will have office space available, just a couple doors down.
What will that cost?
It's not going to be inexpensive.
It's hard to drink, it's inefficient use. I don't know what the use is gonna be yet, but you know, when you refer to it as office, I mean, that is not an ideal office. It may be location wise, but building wise, access, public access.
Well, there, there, there certainly can be offices there that do not require public access.
How will conferences require public access? Where that lets me.
There, there is some, there is some access to that building today and I think it's limited to first floor, if I'm not mistaken.
We're getting tight, you know, at Susan's point. All building in that not ideal direction.
Right. And can you also just refresh my memory, at the outset of all this, I thought that the building, the administrative building down on the corner of Long Hill Road was also going to become available for sale or other use when we did this and I understand that's not the case, did I, did I misunderstand that or was that ever the plan?
That was never the plan, no, we, we had, if you recall, we've been using the five ninety-five building for storage for district storage. And in doing so, we were able to remove a lot of the containers that we have for storage throughout the district. Unfortunately, can we are back using those storage containers in anticipation of this project. Those storage containers will be condensed the best we can into the seven oh one New England building that you're talking about, so we're using it for storage and we're using it for maintenance. We presently have our maintenance spread out in two different areas, one down at Cox in a red barn, which is our wood shop. And then secondly, up at Baldwin in the back, behind where the playground is, we have the old bus office, I guess it was a mobile, mobile trailer that we use for storing of all of our electrical supplies, plumbing supplies and HVAC supply, so we'll get rid of that trailer and condense that into the seven oh one New England Road site as well, so be able to condense that, so that was the original plan to use seven oh one for that maintenance hub and storage hub.
So Cliff, there'll be no administrative offices at seven oh one after the five ninety-five or whatever it is, is finished?
Correct, that's the goal, yes.
Again, that's expensive storage when you think about what could be done with that. So I apologize, I'm gonna go back to previous question, what do you think for a total project cost? Do you have a number for any?
Well, with the furniture, you're probably looking about two point six million for a total project, the nice thing about seven oh one is we will not have to do any real renovations here to create the space that we need for our maintenance guys, so that's a positive there.
So two point six is all in, does that include any of the work that was done by your staff over time or materials? Cause I know you guys, you guys did a lot of work.
Right, so we did all the demolition work, so you're probably talking a couple hundred thousand dollars at least worth of demolition work that we've done over the last five years, so we have saved a considerable amount of money. Unfortunately, the savings we've done has been offsetted by inflation.
Has there ever been a discussion item on the board of that's agenda for them to kind of take a step back and say this doesn't sense anymore? Or has it just kind of kept on creeping?
They've been well informed of the project and, and the escalated costs due to inflation and everything else, so they haven't discussed not consolidating us and keeping us spread out throughout the district. I think they, I don't want to speak for them, you know, directly, but I think the impression is it's much more economical to have us function in one building than us driving around town to three different buildings every time we need to have a meeting, so there's a considerable waste of time.
So that argument only makes sense if we would be reducing staffing to save time, I mean, to say that that's an economic consideration. I don't know, I, I'm not comfortable with this, I, I don't I don't feel like I'm personally well enough informed to be able to vote on this, I realize the standing building committee has blessed this, but they're talking about the, the construction process, they're not talking about any other kind of judgment. I, I would feel more comfortable if the board of that had a discussion of the pros and cons of going ahead and asking for this and whether this is something they want to ask from the community at this time. That's just my, my feeling right now.
Cliff, again, has the board of it taken this up and they, they've approved this contract or has, has been back to the board of it?
It has, I, I informed them at the operations committee of their most recent bid and that we were moving forward with it with the standing building committee. There was no negative feedback on it, they understood the cost. And they asked when we thought we'd be able to move into the space and I said, depending on how fast we get it approved, it could be by the end of summer. There was no discussion on stopping the project at this point in time based upon the cost.
Susan's point, it, it's not a discussion of stopping the project, it just seems like again, this project is taking on a life of its own and we continually react to situations rather than having you know, to Susan's point, the board of Ed making a overall policy decision, yes, consolidating, you know, on the surface makes sense and, and all of those arguments make sense, that's why we initially voted to, to do something like this. The problem is, is you know, we're talking, you know, a thirty or fifty percent increase in, in, in the in the initial logic. And when you're at those kinds of numbers, you know, maybe at some point in time a larger policy decision has to be made. Sandy's point, using that real estate at seven oh one for for storage, you know, I, I think there's a lot of value to consolidating, consolidating all of having a hub for that, I mean, that, that makes a lot of sense, I mean, I'm not sure that that is the highest and best use for seven oh one. It's not that I'm not sure is that the people who should be making the decision have not reviewed, you know, the, what, what we're talking about at this point in time. That being said, you start reviewing and then what are you gonna do, you can't go backwards or so far committed to. I mean, I could just see in five years, you know, the board of it coming back and saying, we need that space where this building is for athletic thing or for escalator.
I, I keep thinking about the facilities report where it seemed every, every department that was interviewed as part of that report talked about is storage, current storage problems and issues and future wishes and so I think to link this, I, I think we should go forward with it, I'm sorry it's gotten to be more money, but and I, but I think we should note very large red letters or someplace that seven oh one might be a storage for now, but I like the idea of possibly keeping in mind that that could be a viable property to sell because we eventually, we hope we're gonna have our new public works slash park and rec facility and I know that storage is an issue, is, is one of the discussions, it's part of that project, looking at everybody involved right here. So maybe, you know, this is very wishful thinking, but maybe at that point, because it is a fairly large site there and hopefully we can accommodate storage, but maybe then that would release seven oh one to be commercially sold or something, you know, you know what I mean, I, I don't know.
And just.
Of it or not, but that's a pretty valuable location for, for storage and I do think maintenance, having a maintenance hub and a storage hub. You know, we have a lot of facilities and we have emphasized over the years how we want to take care of our facilities and making it easier and making it happen is logical and everything, but that seems to be more of an industrial use than, than such a prime piece of real estate. And the point of all of this discussion is that Susan's point is have the board of Ed, you know, stop and said, okay, you know, where are we going with this? I think a policy plan like this should be a ten or fifteen year plan and we keep reacting. Every two or three months, we get it.
Just to interject on, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a little exception with that, we've been talking about the reuse, the adaptive reuse of five ninety-five since discussions around the real high school. That this, this is not a new concept, it's one that was, it was contemplated, but it wasn't discussed publicly because we could, we, we, pre, 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 pre-high school, pre-new, new, new high school. And it was always, okay, once we got past the state's, the clawback provision, that that would be that, and that's why they saved that facility, right?
We were trying to say, like, say clawback and everything else, I mean, I understand all of that logic, but those are that logic and that argument was based on why at this point in time we're inaccurate. That logic and that argument was based on why at this point in time, we're inaccurate now.
Well, I don't, quite honestly, when we were doing the high school, when the new high school, we didn't have. There were no numbers put out about what it would take to retrofit uh, the old science wing four and these premises.
I mean, the conversation, as I recall it, was we had the clawback, we had the time period. And so we couldn't, we had to keep that. And what, you know? What can we do? What can we possibly do that's useful with that? It's not like we wanted to. Have a, have a location there for centralizing administration. It was more like, what are we gonna do with this type of building? Well, that's no longer an issue. So I I would like to hear from the board of that. I would like to hear um, a a discuss, uh, an analysis of the pros and cons. Today with what we know today.
Um, Cliff, when does the board of Ed meet next?
Uh, they would meet, uh, they have a, I believe a meeting on the twenty ninth, which is um. Not publicized, it's more of a workshop. But their official next meeting uh, would be the thirteenth. Of May.
Effectively pushes this the project, the project off by a month.
Yep. And and just, you're, you're talking about seven oh one. Just to refresh your memory. You have to also note that this property, as you're just looking at as a building. Is intertwined with the high school activities. I can't remember exactly where the property line cuts, whether it's. Uh, I'm certain it's after the ropes course. So therefore, if we get rid of the uh, seven oh one property, you're gonna have to relocate the ropes course. And I think possibly the tennis courts may be part of this site and not the high school site. Not a hundred percent certain on that piece, but I am with the ropes course. So we're intertwined uh, somewhat with the main high school property. Just for note. So if you go to get rid of this, it's gonna be more complicated than you may think. And cost you more money.
I I I'm not sure getting rid of it was really the the point. It, um, I'm not sure somebody's gonna be putting a house right next to. The tennis courts, uh, that on that corner, which is a challenging corner at best. Um, you know. It, I think it, it, the highest and best use may be to continue to be town utilized facility, right? Um, I don't, particularly since, as as Sandy mentioned, uh, storage and it's just at such and. And we're, we're busting at the seams over town hall south. We wanna have enough room for the people who are currently there. Um, and so there, there are a variety of these uses for that, that property if, if uh, if if the plan changes. So um. We, uh, I'm trying to get to a place where you feel comfortable. Uh, and that would be, uh, we approve it, uh, pending. Board of education discussion and uh, confirmation that this plan is still one that they're, they're fully committed to. Uh, I don't know whether we could get that from them in in time to make this work.
So I don't, I don't know where I am with the numbers. We thought it was gonna be total one eight, one million, one point eight million, which would include the furnishings. And that was the whole done, one and done project. And now with the furnishings, it's gonna be roughly two point six. Is that, is that the, so it's an eight hundred thousand dollar creep or whatever you wanna call it. Um, since we looked, when we did the bond, which was twenty-two, twenty-three.
Uh, MJ, just for a minute, uh, the, the town fund balance commitment of two hundred and fifty thousand. When was that? When was that done? Was that done at around the same time that we, the bond approval was passed?
Uh, yes, it it was approximately the same, same time, um, we had.
So it was two.
Put this in in into consideration at that time.
Yeah. So effectively we were anticipating those over two million dollars, right? Yeah, yeah, there's a number, two million fifty-five zero zero seven.
I have no problem. Communicating to the board of Ed our concerns and uh. My desire is that somebody there is actually looking at, you know, what is their long-term plan or whatever. Uh. If if waiting can be done, that'd be okay. Waiting to for board of Ed to review it. Frankly, my estimation, I doubt if it would change anything. I mean, that's, that's what worries me. We're gonna delay it. Uh, I think us expressing our concern about this project. Creep and needing some reinforcement from them that they, they are aware of the creep. Uh, and what their long-term policy or plan uh. Is, you know, like. That, that's my concern is that we've got a creep again. It isn't the first time and it's understandable and there are all good reasons why and everybody's doing their job, but. Uh, so therefore, if they can come up with, you know, what is? Or is this going to be a, a ten or fifteen year? Fix or are we gonna be looking at it again in five or ten years? It's probably not gonna be me.
I'm not sure when the last time that the board of Ed commissioned the facility study. No, when you were on the board of it, uh, we, we hired an outside firm to do an analysis, uh. Which included capital projects going out for fifteen to twenty-five years. So I don't know if that document has been updated, uh, to, you know, and and would be interesting to see. Did that document contemplate anything that we're talking about today? Uh, right? Uh, so.
Didn't even think of that.
So, yeah, so, so.
It is the existing.
Right. So, so they, for, for the longest, I know that they had done at least two of those, but I've been around this, I've been doing this for too long. I know they did, they commissioned two major uh, studies. Um, to, to, to move forward on in terms of identifying capital needs uh, out over a period of time. And the number was scary originally. We're, we're talking uh, hundreds of millions of dollars. Uh, so, uh, I, I would ask, uh. If, Charles, if you wouldn't mind, I would, what I'd do is I'd reach out to the chair, express the concerns of this board. Uh, relative to this project and others. And how does, uh, how, how has, how does the board look at this? And have they, have they had any of the same concerns that we have? Uh, and then also in light of their master plan, how does this fit in with the master plan? Is that reasonable?
Yes.
Okay.
Matt, I got a couple.
Lou.
And Cliff, uh, I don't wanna seem like piling on here, but I got a couple of specific questions about some of the items in the, in the proposed quote here. Okay? So. Somebody's over talking. So. At the bottom of page three, it references, this pricing does not include our CM construction management proposal at one thirty-five, right? So it's actually two and a half million dollars. Yes?
Right. That's already been approved. There's a PO already done for that, and that's not even part of these numbers. So if you want.
But the point is, it's one thirty-five. The overall sum, they're good enough then to to point that out. In addition to the proof, two million, two ninety-nine, five eighty-eight. There's an earlier one thirty-five that we approved for them to oversee this project.
Right.
But at the top of page three, it says, does not include, I don't even know what this is, tying E M M E controls into campus BMS, I presume. Baldwin?
Uh, it's the building management system.
So there's another.
We wanna tie eventually the uh, building system into the overall district system. We'd have to work with Johnson Controls to do that.
And so is that a ten thousand dollar event or a hundred thousand dollar event?
Uh, if I were to speculate, it's probably somewhere around ten, you're probably close, probably around ten thousand dollars. That would probably. Uh, if we feel like we need to do that, would probably come out of my operational budget. Um. Unless there was funding left in, in the capital bonding.
So there's, there's a convenience there, but it's not a necessity to operate either building.
Correct. Yep.
Okay. There's a couple of items here that it, that just seem like oddly round numbers. And I don't know if these were always part of the plan or what they are, but on page three, again, at the top. At the HVAC line, there's something called commissioning for five thousand dollars.
Yep.
What exactly is that?
So they go through to make sure everything's operating uh, correctly and efficiently uh, for the plans and specification and design of the system itself. So uh, similar like we've done on these other projects, uh, the HVAC projects where we've had a commissioning agent come through. Uh, they do have a punch list of anything that's not done correctly or is not functioning correctly. Um. It gives us a, a much more. Uh, in-depth look at the system to ensure it's working correctly.
How is that different from the five we're paying for the construction management work?
Construction management works, they do not get into the detail that a commission agent would. A commission agent goes through every single point in the system. Whereas a commission, uh, the construction management, the, they're gonna look at and say, you know, is it working correctly overall? But they don't get into every single point by point uh, testing and everything like a commissioning agent would.
Now, let me follow up on that, Cliff. Commissioning agent, is that an, someone independent of ORNL?
Uh, I think uh, they're doing uh, commissioning, ORNL is commissioning it uh, specifically. So. That means they're not just gonna do a general overview, they're gonna dive into it and do the point by point. Uh, some of the projects, we've gotten a third-party commissioning agent, but uh, since the construction manager. Is under, you know, our realm already, they're gonna do the commissioning uh, for that building.
Did you have others, Lou?
Yeah, I don't understand that one. Um, uh, on page two, toward the top, under uh, doors and windows. There's an item for almost six thousand, five thousand nine hundred dollars, something called film.
Security film.
What is that? What does that mean exactly?
It enhances the ability uh, or strength of the windows. So if someone were to try to break in, similar to what we've done with a lot of schools. We've enhanced their uh, windows uh, structurally. So you can't just walk up with a rock, bust out the window and walk in this uh, building.
Okay. So it makes it almost more like a car window in, in a sense that it.
Yep.
Okay. Well, those, those were the items that jumped out at me.
Anything further? Uh, is there a motion to approve with the condition that I reach out to the chair of the board of education as described earlier? Is there a motion?
I'll make it.
Second.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Any comments or questions? Let me try your mind. Selectmen Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Cliff. Thank you. And uh, we are hoping this is the last time we see this, uh, come back to this board.
That is, we said that too.
And we just have another hundred and thirty-five thousand pop up. It wasn't included in the back of the envelope number and I.
All right, item eight, environmental planner Kevin McGee, uh, eight dot one, discuss and take possible action to approve uh, the all habitat services. As the contractor to conduct the aquatic invasive plant treatment in the Quanapug for state contract rates.
So. Morning, uh, yes, our annual treatment, you know, treatment of the Quanapug uh, for the invasive plants out there. Um, helps improve the recreational, uh, at the same time of getting rid of the invasive, um. Not needed invasive plants out there, we're improving the conditions of the lake for, for boating, kayaking, crew teams and all that. Activity which occur out there. Um, our habitat services has a state contract for it. Um, their fee uh, for this work is forty-two thousand seven hundred eight dollars and six cents. Um, and funds coming out of this year and next year's capital budgets. Uh, the first treatment is looking to be done, um, very end of this month and beginning of next month. Um, treating the. Northern, um, cell sections of lake, um. So different type of plants require different times of year for treatment. Uh, we haven't really done early treatment. We're hoping to. Finally get one in this year, um, which uh, make um, a big dent in some of the um, invasives growing in the lake there.
So Kevin, since we're, we're kind of on a roll now, you're next. So, um, we, um. We pay, we pay some sum every year for this. Is that correct?
Correct. It comes out of capital.
Right. So when you treat these plants, then they grow, I mean. They come back, they, no matter what you do, they come back next year and we have to throw another forty-two thousand dollars at it. I mean, that's what I'm asking.
We are, we actually have a product in there that's a state family lab is used last year, um, which is. Um, first year we used it out here in a long time. It's supposed to have the effect of getting down to the root level. We're actually supposed to. Is eliminating the plant itself, invasive plant itself. And the goal is hopefully within five years, we're in a maintenance treatment where you're not doing thirty-six thousand dollars, but you might be doing. Twelve thousand dollars to go out there and spot treat.
So this number could go down.
Yes, our, the whole plan is actually to reduce the amount of herbicides that's going into the lake. And hopefully we identified hopefully the right product, um, get actually permitted for the right product to do that, that work.
And the other question was, did, I don't know, maybe Janice said this at one of our times when we talked about the dam. The dam finally happens, did we say some, that might help with some of these um, plants or that has nothing to do with that?
There's a small area close to the dam, which I think they'll be digging up by the whole, by the whole pond area down the other end. It's not really gonna be, it's not gonna be, um. Dug out or dredged out at all. And that southern end really is made to be more, acting more as a pond versus an open water area, which helps with the diversity of the, um. Fish species and other aquatic wildlife. Species.
You say the northern, that basically the boat ramp.
The boat ramp area in front of Choat there, um. So there's like three sections that we kind of treat in there, which is the northern area by, basically Choat up. Um, then the center shawl area, which is just south of the swim area there. And then the southern channel, uh, which is the south end of the lake.
This is not the mats. This is actual.
This is separate from the mats that Park and Rec puts in and pulls out, which does a great job for that's. That small area, but I believe there's like twenty mats that they stick in there, uh, probably going in shortly, um, until. Beginning of uh, June, where they pull them back out and those suppress the growth of the weeds.
And they don't work for the area that you're talking about here.
It's too big of an area. And unfortunately, we're fighting an issue where the uh. Um, many states, uh, Maine, other states there, uh, Vermont. They actually have um, signage directing people how to take care of the boats. Sometimes there's actually people from the state that stop in at the boat ramp, ramps and making sure. That the public is cleaning their boats when they're leaving the boat ramp areas and inspecting the boats, make sure they're bringing nothing in. So us having a lake which is publicly accessed by boats, um, there's still a high threat of. Basis being pulled in there and there's actually a new one, which, um, the state has. Us keeping an eye out for, the state's keeping an eye out for in the lake there, um, which could be really threatened, so like, unfortunately with all these. Commerce and boats in and out there. And we are, I mean, part of the funding this year is not, this period is not it, but we have for next, next year. And I haven't heard back from the state yet. We do have a state grant we put in for a fifty-fifty match, which was for the, um. Twenty-four, twenty-five into six, basically twenty, two thousand twenty-five uh, years, we said. Fingers crossed, I should be hearing back hopefully shortly on that.
We've received that.
We will see that several times, yeah, several times, I agree.
Right. Uh, any further questions? Is there a motion to approve the contract with? Um, all habitat services uh, for the state contract conducting late uh, treatment. In the amount of forty thousand seven hundred eight dollars and six cents.
Same.
Second?
Same.
Uh, one last comment, uh, Kevin, in your memo, thank you for highlighting. Um, that similar to previous years, the treatment will not utilize the chemical glyphosate. Uh, and that all herbicides have been approved by Connecticut Deep, uh, permission to the town, uh, that issue, particularly glyphosate. Is that what you said? Glyphosate?
Glyphosate, yeah.
Um, and risen to the attention of some members of the community as being a challenging substance. So.
And if we do need to treat, um, we have a. Similar um, herbicide, um, which is, I cross out on the back of the plan, I'm using it. Uh, which is clare cast, which is a. Um, that's a similar type of thing, but it's not as toxic. Um, and you can see it's actually a highly, a lot more, three times the cost of it, but we do. Have it, um, a cost where we are in a need to utilize that one.
Great. Thank you. All right. We, uh, let me try your minds. Selectmen Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. Kevin, thank you.
Yep. And the other point too is we do get, I think it's thirty-two hundred a year from Choat.
Choat, that's right. Okay, item nine, engineering department, item one, discuss and take possible action with consultant services for the MS four compliance group, Jess?
Good morning. So this has been an annual assess of doing compliance with our MS four permit with the state, um, and it requires us to do uh, dry weather screening and, um, repeat wet weather testing. Um, so the proposal is, um, for the a hundred uh, outfall locations that we've selected in town that we haven't previously screened for the consultant to do the screening. If they see flow, they'll go back and check again to see if maybe it was just an anomaly or something needed to dry up. Um, but if they see, uh, flowing in dry weather twice, then they'll do a screening test to see if there's a chance of an illicit discharge. And, um, and then in the, uh, six locations, we'll do the repeat wet weather testing. These have been identified as our consistent testing locations, um, to see if things are any worse or improving and, um, we'll be working on, uh, once we get the testing from here, uh, trying to identify if it continues to be. Most of them tend to have, uh, uh, bacterial, uh, contamination to see if there's anything the best management practices that we might be able to employ there to try and improve the testing results year after year.
How have those results come out?
Um, probably worse than you'd wanna know. Yeah, I mean, stormwater runoff is pretty dirty, you know, we tend to have a high bacterial count, um, typically, you know, think of it animal waste, um, septic system overflows potentially, you know, so, um, that's why we have to continue to screen it, um, I think those are our biggest problems and then nitrogen is also another problem, which is also.
What about the issue of illicit discharge, I mean, is, I mean, that the drainage is connected to the wrong thing, or is that me?
Yeah, yeah, so there is.
Have you had many of them?
Uh, we haven't, we have not found any, we've had a couple dumping situations where people are putting things in catch basins that they shouldn't be, but, um, in my term here, I haven't come across any direct connections that are considered illicit, meaning like someone, you know, piped something from their house, uh, soil line into a catch basin instead of having it just stay in their septic system.
I mean, sometimes you see hoses being run from some pumps.
Right.
Into the streets, through the driveways or whatever, would that be considered illicit?
Uh, no, as long as it's clean water, um, that, that's been an obvious problem lately, we've gotten a lot of complaints, um, but we've had an enormous amount of rain, uh, particularly over the winter season, which is, uh, unusual. And the, you know, the environment has a, isn't able to, with the trees and vegetation all dormant, there, there's no take up of that water. So it just is worse over the wintertime, um, so I've gotten a lot of complaints about direct discharges from some pumps, other types of pipes, but mostly some pumps to the road, we do have an ordinance against it, we're not really chasing after people right now because of the amount of rain and, you know, their option is to have a wet basement, which, or have their basement fill up with water. Um, if it was a nuisance, say during freezing times, we would have to, you know, possibly inform them that they need to redirect it in some way that it's not causing the hazard, but likely all those are just groundwater discharges that are clean, we don't have the ability to go around and test all of them, but if something looks odd, we've gotten complaints, you know, we'll have the health department go take a look at it and decide if they think it should be tested and, you know, we, we work kind of together to try and, uh, look at anything suspected to be an illicit discharge, but.
Is so as far as somebody connecting to the sewer drain or the drain, the, I mean, that would all be a permitting process and we don't have that kind of an issue going on very much.
Right, but we do have people do work on weekends and when, you know, no one's looking without permits, but, um, I haven't found anything to be a problem as of yet. Anytime people wanna connect their some pumps or putting drains into our catch basin, they are required to get a street excavation permit to do that, I mean.
Well, you know, I, I was thinking more to your point of rainy season we've had, as far as somebody trying to drain their yard or, I mean, now there's wetlands in people's backyards.
Yes, um, there, I have seen people, uh, pumping out land, um, you know, that's, I don't know if it was all in our town, but I've seen it happen, uh, it's not unusual, especially, people do have isolated little pockets in their yards and things like that. Um, and if it was seen and thought to be a problem, like pumping out a wetland, then we would contact, you know, Kevin, whatever. Um, but right now it's mostly, um, just, you know, a real problem with the amount of groundwater, the high groundwater table and the amount of rain we've been getting, so.
Is there a motion to approve, uh, uh, the engagement of Weston and Sampson for testing for MS four compliance in the amount of thirteen thousand?
Oh, second, second.
Any questions? Let me try your minds, Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries, thank you, Janice, wanna talk a little bit about the Grass Island Shack?
Sure. So, uh, mother, uh, mother nature outpaced us and, uh, took the shack down overnight on Thursday, it appears. Um, did go out there on, uh, Friday morning, uh, myself and assistant town engineer walked from Neck Road out, that was the only way to get there with the way the, the weather, the seas were. Um, the, um, pilings collapsed and the building fell forward. Um, we did know the front pilings had a bit of a lean to them, but wasn't expecting it to be a catastrophic failure like we had. Um, interestingly enough, um, the, the pilings in the front of the building, which were out of the ground and laying there at this point, um, were only six, six and a half feet deep, which was surprising to me, how shallow they were, uh, we had no knowledge of how deep they were, but that was rather shallow, but, um, it appears all of them collapsed, um, some of the rear, um, are still standing, but the beam connecting them, you know, fell off and fell forward, so, um, I have a team of structural engineer who is working with us on the design of the new foundation, he's gonna meet me this morning, we're gonna go out and take a look at, along with, um, the barge contractor Nick Fisher, who also does a lot of work on the Temple Islands, um, uh, to take a look at it and see what we think we wanna do short term, uh, to secure the building, just, you know, to save it. Um, and then, you know, still moving forward with, um, the boring test that still needs to be done for the design of the new piers for the building. Um, so it complicates it in that we have to probably, my guess is, depending on what comes out of this morning, but my guess is we might have to move it twice, instead of just the one time onto the new foundation in order to save it, um, it might be best to move it to high ground, if we can find enough space for high ground and where it's finally gonna be relocated. Cause as you know, the, the land is limited when we have high, extreme high tide events, like we saw late last week.
What does, uh, the permitting process, well, how would that change?
We're all set with the permits, so.
And if we had to move it twice, you know?
Yeah, yeah, we'll just have to follow, there was a NDDB that took a little bit of time because there's, uh, there was a species of concern we had to investigate, so we investigated that and found this particular plant that, uh, was confirmed not to be on Grass Island, it's in the East River Marsh area, but not particularly there. So then we got the all clear from Deep's, um, natural diversity database. And then the only other consideration is, um, uh, turtles, um, and that, that starts, uh, uh, at the end of, um, April, any work we do out there, we have to just protect the work area or disturbed areas with silt fencing to make sure turtles don't get into that area to then try and lay eggs and, you know, get affected by the work, just to keep them out of the work area, so.
So the permit cycle is intact.
Yeah, we, we have the permits as of, um, March, we received our approval.
We're just going through the steps, like you said, with the borings and.
Right. Yeah, there was tentatively scheduled, um, for the, late this week to do the, the boring so that the design could be done and all that. Um, so we're gonna continue on only trying to, you know.
I, I know that, you know, you had a meeting this morning and anything you say today is just basically a conjecture, but if the, if moving it to protect it or to save it or whatever, uh, is not feasible, the option would be just save what we can at this point in time, or anchor what we can, or, I don't know, what, what?
Yeah, I mean, so talking with the structural engineer on Friday and, you know, I'm thinking through things myself, I mean, you know, one of the thoughts was, do we take off the porch roof and decking and save the center part of the building, which is a lot smaller footprint? The overall size of the building is about thirty by thirty, the interior part is like fifteen or less in terms of, you know, so that's what we'll be looking at today. You know, I had outreach from at least one contractor trying to anchor it just where it is, in the meantime, that's gonna be a consideration, just so that it doesn't move off where it is and float away, um, you know, and, and we think the building could withstand being wet for a couple of weeks or however long the timeframe is after we discussed today.
Concern, you know, my mind and other minds is, is that if another tide would float it away from where it is and which would make it that much more difficult, but it sounds like you're on it.
Yeah, we're trying to consider all options and, and trying to be as, you know, frugal as we can with the approach while still trying to save it, I mean, I.
And you got the parameters you're all preventing, that's what I was.
Yeah, the permitting has been in place since, um, uh, early March, we got our approval from planning and zoning, and zoning for, um, the work. Um, the cons, you know, the, the obvious issue is we don't know what we're gonna need for a foundation, how much that's gonna cost, um, whether it fell or not, um, and the fact that it's gonna be in an area that's a limited upland area, um, you know, we saw an exorbitant amount of erosion in the area of the island, um, over just a year, year and a half's time, and is that gonna continue? It may, um, the only thing I could say is if we put these new foundations in, they're gonna be deeper than six and a half feet. So they'll withstand it, but will the thing, will it be sitting on dry land at all or in the water or, you know, I don't know.
We haven't had a hurricane in a while.
Yeah, I don't.
We're taking care of the tide in the water.
And it's, it's a very vulnerable, changeable, you know, Grass Island is, is, it's sand, it's, you know, moving sand, erosion's happening. Um, you know, there's been comments, you should put, build a groin or a jetty. Well, this is not a, I mean, I know it's an iconic monument for the town, but it's not an inhabited structure, it's not, you know, environmentally and the, and the cost involved in doing those things to try and save the island itself, um, I don't think is something that is gonna be permissible or something that we're gonna wanna undertake. Um, there's a, there's a recent release from FEMA of an, of a, of a scenario for erosion that we could possibly see. Um, it's an interesting, uh, it just came out about a month or two ago and it's, uh, was presented, I think, to the public a few weeks ago, and it, you know, depending on what the right answer is for sea level rise and all that, the amount of erosion we can expect particularly at a Grass Island is extensive, you know, so, you know, it's kinda, kinda where we're at, um, so I'll do the work to see if we could secure it and report back once I have a better understanding of costs, um, you know, that's the other thing is, you know, the cost.
Who owns the land?
The town owns the land.
And it's a true island?
Or is it just, it's a peninsula? It's a peninsula, yeah, you could come off by, by land, Neck Road, walk in at low tide.
It's, it's some real high tides, it's an island.
Yeah, uh, uh, high tide, at some high tide, it is an island, but, um.
On the weekend, I noticed an awful lot of people there, walking all over it, do you think there are any safety concerns?
Yeah, um, I, yeah, we could consider putting paper on it when we go out there, but, um, yeah, I, you know, I, I think it, it seems secure, I mean, I, I did step on it when I went out on Friday, I, I don't know if I would encourage people, I mean, it, there is a bit of a warped because it fell, it's kind of shifted a few things, um, but, you know, we'll bring, see if we're gonna bring, um, stakes to mark out where it can go temporarily, permanently, and, and then we'll see what space we have available to, to do all that and plan accordingly.
If, i- if the decision is made to move it, what kind of timing, like that?
Um, that's gonna depend on, um, the, the boring contractor, I believe, is gonna try and, you know, get out there as soon as possible to do the boring and then our engineer, I'm sure can get the design done quickly. Um, and then we'll get an idea of depth for a foundation and.
No, it's about the temporary move.
Oh, the temporary moving? If it needs to move, we're gonna get on it as soon as possible.
So up to it, like.
Oh, no, I think we're talking a week or two, yeah, yeah.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Well, that's good to get news to get out to you, to Susan's point, I mean, it has been a topic of discussion, obviously. Uh, and after today's, this week's meetings, uh, getting that word out and people visibly seeing, you know, some activity that, that'll, that'll be good.
Yeah, we'll summarize, uh, what Janice has just talked about and put something out on our social media. And also probably do a quick press release.
Yeah. And I, I believe, I mean, in terms of funding, I'm, I'm not aware of, I think there's some our funding left, and then, you know, I didn't, I did reach out to the Guilford Foundation to see what they had, they had some monies left over from the last time work was done to the building, but they, they only had about fifteen thousand dollars and they have to retain the majority of that, they only are allowed to um, give out a small percentage of whatever endowment there is for the, so there was really no money there, so, um, you know, I don't, there's been talk about community involvement, I mean, there's been a lot of comments, but nobody's really stepped up to the plate with any any help or, or funding.
Facts, yes.
So, just wanna put it out there in terms of this board's decision-making process, how, kind of, how you wanna proceed with that. I'll try and get the numbers as soon as I can.
Great.
And we, you know, again, the regulations are important.
Yeah, we're all set there right now and we'll follow with, you know, the requirements, uh, for the protection of the turtles, um.
You don't wanna get caught up in a motion and do something where we're gonna regret.
Nope.
Took something through, got the eyes across.
Yeah, and I mean, it's like, you know, it's a remote area, it's very difficult to get to, you need to bring things in by barge. Um, so it's, you know, it's not the, you know, and even knowing that maybe it was in peril sooner, um, it's not something we can inspect easily or anything like that, it wasn't really on the radar to like, you know, maybe wrongfully, um, look at it more regularly to know that it was maybe, we could have caught it, maybe, I don't know. It was a pretty, the wind, it could have been wind as along with, you know, water affecting that, that building and causing it to collapse, so.
Well, thank you, and we look forward to, uh, hearing your report.
Yep, we'll keep you posted.
Well, it's nice to know our, our concern, knowing that we had to do something, given it's been a few months, we have done the permitting process, so, you know, we're.
Yeah, yeah, we were hoping to outpace Mother Nature, but we didn't.
Well, like I said, that, that's the message, uh, again, a part of the message that we should get out there, that, you know, it has not been ignored, the process had been started. And, uh.
Yeah, the, the irony is, there's probably gonna be a barge in, in the channel this week, that we're gonna start. We're gonna start with the boring.
And that's the word I think we have to get out, that, you know, it has not been ignored, it just, you know, the process timed out.
Thank you, Jess.
No problem.
All right, uh, item ten, Public Works, Dave, that one, discuss and take action to award line striping and pavement markings to Safety Marker LLC, first state contract twenty three PSX zero zero three two eight. Morning, sir.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good, uh, so with engineering, we went through and looked at where we need to add stop bars, school slow signs on the, on the roads that are faded or just not there. Um, there's two quotes that we, that you see there, one quote, we're actually gonna use some dedicated road money uh, for those roads, and then the other one is what would come out of our budgets, um, combined, so.
How does this compare over the years?
Uh, I don't, I don't know, uh, if it's an epoxy that's painted on there, you're gonna see a long life, I mean, the school.
I mean, cost of this year. I mean, cost of this year, I mean, it's not a necessary annual thing, but.
No, it's not an annual thing.
Got it, got it.
Any uh other questions? Is there a motion to approve? Uh, the uh contract with Safety Markets for ten thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars? Is that the number?
Yeah.
Yep, nine ninety. Thank you. It's your motion.
Oh.
Second. Uh, any further comments or questions? Let me try your minds, Slaclan Federici. Aye, that's your hand up. Got it.
Yeah.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, we have one item we want to add to the agenda, so let's call it ten A, and that would be um, a request from the Fire Department, particularly Chief Hershak relative to uh frame frame replacement for Pierce Arrow XT pumper. Uh, is there a motion to add?
Some moved.
Second.
Yeah, second. Uh, let me try your minds, Slaclan Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room? Charlie? Um, we didn't have the ambulance one, did we?
Yeah.
Oh, is that the second one? Is the ambulance one? Well, we're adding both then.
Okay.
All right, let's start with the pumper, please.
Yeah, the pumper. Uh, this is the one that was scheduled to get replaced. Um, it's a twenty thirteen. Um, of course, we're going to move it around and you replace another unit with it, but the frame is severely corroded. And uh so they approached Pierce Manufacturing, of course. There is no warranty on the frame, but they did come out, take a look at it, came directly out from the from the factory and agreed to replace the frame, uh basically give us the frame at no charge. But at the same time, what we're going to do is uh and and talk to the contractor and we're going to replace all the drive train. In other words, we're going to put all the new engine in it, all new uh transmissions, all new rear ends and and new wiring, new subframes, all new air chambers. Basically, it's a new, a new chassis and we're going to.
Saying, isn't everybody?
Yeah, basically what we're doing is just putting up the present body and pump module, which we just rebuilt the pump onto the truck. And the the benefit is that we're saving over over seven hundred thousand dollars and we're going to get another uh good ten years out of this, out of this vehicle when it comes back. And but even better is that from the start of the contract, it's three hundred, three hundred and eight days. However, they only need the truck for a short four-month, three-month period. We actually got to deliver the truck down there, okay, and then we're going to take the chassis off. But to me, it's a win-win deal. Um, and so that amount was five hundred and twenty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. And they also recommend a contingency of twenty percent, which I don't think we're going to use all that because since we're replacing everything new, there's a hundred and five, one sixty-six. So the total would be, if my math is right, six hundred and thirty thousand nine hundred and ninety-six dollars.
Excellent.
We still reflect seven hundred thousand dollars.
They have used over the.
And a new, a new engine is three to four years old.
Disciplined, but the frame still coming down.
Yeah, yeah. Um, just want to uh with uh Pete uh online and also Darlene, uh relative to the process. Even though you said it's not covered under warranty, this is essentially a warranty replacement, right?
It's correct.
Um, so would uh would anybody else be able to do that kind of uh replacement at at this kind of price? Okay. Uh, Pete, I know you're online. Um, if you would for a minute, I just want to make sure that we're uh conforming with the purchasing policies that uh this would be considered sole source uh because of the relationship with the manufacturer. Uh, and um as as just stated, this is being treated like a warranty.
Right, it's correct.
Yeah, I I think as described, I don't know, excuse me, I don't know what other contractor would be able to do this. So it does sound like sole source. I'm kind of losing my voice. Okay, just make one recommendation. I think we need to let all the department heads know, though, when they add something to the agenda that they're asking for an expenditure, it would be good to identify in advance if they're not following the purchasing policy, what the exception is that their uh claiming applies. So Charlie's uh certainly explained it well and it would be a sole source. It'd be good to know that coming in. Okay?
Yeah, this was a late addition. It was Friday. Uh, the the dealers come together rather rather quickly. Uh, I want to applaud the chief for his negotiating skills with uh Firematic. Is that it? Firematic Supply Company. Um, yeah. So is there a motion to approve? Second, any further comments or questions?
Yeah, I have a question, actually, Matt.
Got you, Lou.
Did they, uh, chief, thanks for that presentation. Did they identify anything we were doing or could have been doing? Let me start break that up. Anything we were doing that contributed to this corrosion? Or is there something we should be doing to avoid it in future? I guess those are sort of combined.
It's it's just the uh the answer to the question is no. Um, we already worse the underbody of the truck. You know, we we try to take care of that um as best we can. Um, it's just the amount of salt that's going on, the the change of that salt in in the in the state of Connecticut. Um, and and it just causes wicked corrosion. It's not new. The new frame is going to be galvanial. So it's going to be, yeah, so it's going to be a galvanial dip. So it's going to withstand that. All the current apparatus are do have galvanial framed on them and we're not seeing this corrosion issue. So it's it is working. It's just basically the material and the product going on the roads.
Okay, interesting.
What what were you thinking? What were you thinking, Lou? The old Rusty Jones treatment on the bottom of your car?
No, I'm just, I'm just curious. I mean, in this day and age, I mean, the thing's ten years old. I'm I'm surprised that hadn't been done. I mean, they've been doing that. For longer than that and on automobiles, we, you know, there's plenty of ten-year-old cars out there that aren't coming apart, exa- exposed to the same conditions.
It's what the automotive industry did for years, planned obsolescence. You know, you're going to need to buy a new one ten years later or.
Sure. I would have thought that. We left that behind in the eighties, but I guess it's still, it's still with us in some circumstances. I get it. Just seems odd.
All right, so uh we've got a motion on the floor. Let me uh try your minds. Uh, Slaclan Federici?
Aye.
Aye. Those in the room?
Aye.
Now, item two, which is the ambulance.
Right, this is an another sole source vendor. Um, we've been doing business with Exelonance for thirty-one years. And uh previously, we used to do remounts uh of all the ambulances. And but now the boxes, this box that we're replacing is a nineteen ninety-three vintage and it's no longer uh advisable to remount it. And the cost of it of the remount would be more than what a new a new vehicle would be. So, you know, we we've looked at this price and I've talked to other vendors and uh we use exclusively Chevy cha-chassis, the thirty-five hundred Chevy chassis, four-wheel drive. And we've had excellent luck with those. Um, nobody else, no other ambulance manufacturer uses Chevy chassis but this one. All right, and uh we've had an excellent relationship with these people for thirty-one years. And the price of the ambulance, which is in the present binding issue, we applied for two hundred and fifty-one thousand. Again, the budget for the new one is three hundred and fifty-one thousand four twenty-four fifty-nine. So the question is, is, you know, can we use what's excess in the in the bond, the present bond to cover this? It's something that needs to be uh.
Yeah, we probably need to talk. Uh, MJ, um did the ambulance, was the ambulance included with the new uh the new pumper?
It's in that same.
So we can, it's within that same bond approval, then we have the ability to move it. Um, MJ, I uh no longer here. Oh, you're there.
Yeah, I'm here.
Uh, I I'm I'm pretty sure that the bond council would probably approve this, right, as a appropriate use. Um, so if if we uh make, we make a motion and approve this contingent upon uh the funding uh confirmation by bond council, would that be something?
Yes, uh worst, yeah, worst case scenario, there would be a resolution for you to approve at the next meeting, but um we can send that over to him today.
Great. All right, uh, is there a motion to approve the purchase in the amount of three hundred and fifty-one thousand four twenty-four and fifty-nine cents?
Some.
Second.
Second.
Any further comments or questions? Uh, let me try your minds. Slaclan Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries. See you.
Thank you.
Great negotiating.
Will, if any minded, ambulance be this.
Oh, yes, galvanial. Yeah, everything that we buy from now on is galvanial. There's no, no.
So, all right, well done.
Okay.
All right. Uh, item eleven, discuss to take possible action on noise variance application. Uh, and this is uh uh a friends and family barbecue at the twenty-six Little Meadow Room. There will be amplified music. It's been approved by Deputy Chief Sal Messi. Uh, and again, this would take place uh the twenty-fifth of May between two and seven o'clock. And uh, let's see, traditional family barbecue and your annual blended family Olympics. Potentially up to seventy people. Is there a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
It's disappointing to see that there was a noise complaint a few years ago.
Yeah.
I know, I noticed that too, but it the they've listed the event as only lasting from two to seven and I thought that the noise um things only get involved after ten o'clock at night.
Well, there must just be getting any complaints.
It's, Sal, do you think the other event went later, two years, three years ago?
Actually, oddly enough, I happen to be one of the officers that responded to that event. Uh, the uh, the actual uh incident was probably uh prior to seven, but uh if someone does contact the police department regarding noise and we determine that it's excessive, we ask them to turn it down. So it was, it wasn't a real big issue. Uh, the homeowner is a very, very nice person. Uh, they were very cooperative. No problems at all, but I I felt it could be noted there for your, for your own edification.
Thank you. The variance is for time. It's not for festival level.
Oh, you know, I went through this at great length when the um UI, um, ever source put up a some kind of a generator when the library was being renovated. And then some of the neighbors felt that the hum was too loud and we had spent thousands of dollars to get the sound measured and everything. So there is something to do with decimal levels. I got quite, I knew a lot more about it than than.
It's it's a combination. The decimal levels, uh, the tolerable decimal levels go uh go down the later it gets. I believe it's, it's my recollection of looking at the uh the noise organs.
Well, anyway.
We do have, we do have a noise meter, but if I, if I remember correctly, it was just the microphone that they were using. We asked them to turn it down. It was just projecting a little bit too far, so they uh they did turn it down.
Good. It's reasonable all around.
Yep.
I live, I wouldn't mind hearing it. I'm too far up.
Maybe you can get an invite.
That's for dancing on the deck.
All right, let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Um, all right, appointments and resignation. Uh, is there a motion to uh appoint Kurt Bursting as an alternate to the Marina Commission to fill a vacancy for a term to expire May thirtieth, twenty twenty-four? And for a new term to expire May thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight.
Some moved.
Uh, second?
I'll say.
Let me try your minds, Slaclan Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye.
Can you hear me?
Uh, uh, act on a recommendation to move Chris Robinson from alternate to regular member on the Guilford Lakes Golf Course to fill a vacancy for a term to expire September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Lou?
I would like to make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Uh, let me try your minds, Slaclan Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. Uh, twelve, that three, act on a recommendation to uh reappoint Lee Sander as an alternate to the Economic Development Commission for a term to expire April thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. Is there a motion? I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, let me try your minds, Slaclan Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. Twelve, that four, uh, act on a recommendation to reappoint Tim Galvin to the Housing Authority for a term to expire March thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to reappoint him.
A second.
And a second, good. Uh, let me try your minds, Slaclan Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. Twelve, that five, act on a recommendation to reappoint Kurt Griffin to the Shellfish Commission for a term to expire on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-eight. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
And the second?
Second.
Second, uh, let me try your minds, Slaclan Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Uh, twelve, that six, act on a recommendation to reappoint Garth Varian as an alternate uh to the Shellfish Commission for a term to expire on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-eight. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
And a second?
Second.
Let me try your minds, Slaclan Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Did you hear me? Yeah.
That twelve, that seven, remove from table and take possible action on the removal of Patricia Keegan from the Conservation Commission. Is there a motion to remove from the table?
Some moved.
And a second, no. Let me try your minds, Slaclan Federici?
Aye.
Uh, those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, uh, as to the name motion uh for the removal of Patricia Keegan from the Conservation Commission, is there a motion?
Some moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay, Kevin, we had uh nothing further from uh.
Nothing further from.
From the town committee.
My side. No, I I reached out and had a couple of conversations and no- nothing ever came back in terms of anything.
Good, good.
Okay, so that was the, the reason we had tabled it is we wanted to be sure we were not acting an error.
Yes.
Does the fifteen days start now or did it start back then?
So that letter is dated March sixth.
March sixth.
Yeah. Well, that's the date of the letter. So I'm assuming the letter went to her.
Oh, yeah, yes, yeah. Sure. All right, yeah. All right, um, so let me try your minds. Slaclan Federici?
What's the motion?
Aye.
Motion, motion to remove. Zero, did we do it?
We we did. We made a motion to remove.
Okay, Slaclan Federici, is it aye?
Yeah, so but but real quick, for the vote, but just maybe to Charles's question, you sent the letter March sixth. There were fifteen days. You heard nothing back in response.
Right. And and we 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 put it on the table last month because uh Sue was uh was looking to confirm that the respective town committee uh to confirm with the town committee um that uh that they did not have an issue with it or that they wanted to to contest it. Yeah. And she followed through on that and there was no response that was would suggest we do anything other than what we're doing.
I got it. We we we've already been cautious and deliberate here, so I'm in favor of this motion to to remove her.
That's an aye. Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. What's that? And first, for this point, you've been here eight years longer than we have. You have a uh a recommendation to replace? Uh, is there a recommendation coming up?
Yeah, I think there's a recommendation coming up. I think there is a uh alternate, which is looking to, they're looking to have move up.
Move up.
Who, they're actually eyeing to take over as a vice chair position.
Just let them, let them on right away. Move that. Thanks, Kevin.
Yeah.
Um, okay, uh, no requests for town property, committee reports, nothing, uh, correspondence, anybody comments on the correspondence?
Well, we're going to get to another three.
Yeah, uh, public work report, no, building report, no. Letter from State Street Residence, dated April one, twenty twenty-four. I wound up having a, you know, a conversation with um the, uh, was it Dawn? One of the, one of the two, uh, who signed it, who wrote the letter, actually. One of the challenges I had last week uh was there was no email account or um or phone number to call and talk to them about it, so. Um, I met with uh town staff uh last week. Um, and to to formulate a response, which I will be emailing to her today. I had a conversation with her Friday. Um, the gist of which was uh I I took issue with some of the language in it. They were not building inland wetlands. Um, the the permit was not, did not permit the filling of wetlands. Uh, Kevin confirmed that through the inland wetlands commission. Uh, the project was approved by both inland wetlands and planning and zoning. We had a uh a series of discussions uh several months ago uh with the Stolkowskis, who are adjacent neighbors as well, uh relative to the design and their. Uh, relative to the design and their concerns over uh, uh, the stormwater runoff, septic runoff. Um, the, the eventual, uh, not compromise, but the satisfaction of the, for, for the Solkowski's was. In actually meeting with uh, uh, DeGeneres, the, uh, the contractor, the developer of that property. And his engineering team, as well as our folks, and they were satisfied that the, uh, there were set, there were protections put in place. Uh, that would, that, that satisfied them. Uh, so first off, it was wetland. Second, uh, she's welcome to meet with the, uh, I'd recommend it, recommending that they meet with the developer. Uh, and any staff that, uh, they want to meet with is, is fine. Um, I also, uh, pointed out, as you heard earlier today. Uh, some of the, the highest levels of, of, uh, stuff, of rainwater, uh, unprecedented le- levels of rainwater, so. Um, you, you can see it all over town. Um, and then also acknowledge that, you know, sometimes during construction. There are temporary disruptions and things, uh, but the final design actually had. Uh, uh, the, uh, the, the, the runoff of the property going to the southern port portion of that property. As opposed to the western portion, which is where these, these folks live. Um, and because that's where, that's, that, that's the open area of that property. Uh, which is, there's a backup that pinch backs.
Yeah, it goes back to our, one property between it, it goes to um. Anderson Associates, our Anderson um sanitary septic system people there, they have a lot. Between this one here and the pinch back piece.
So, uh, I, I will, as I said, I had the conversation with the resident on the Friday, and she asked that I, uh, put it in writing. We'll, I'll be doing that uh at some point today. Okay?
She could relate into our conversation earlier.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And the water is just, I mean, the reservoirs are in excess of a hundred percent.
Yeah. Okay, uh, that's it for correspondence. All business? New business? Public forum? Uh, all right, um, hearing none. Um, we have a couple of items, uh. On, uh, on, that require executive session, uh, the first of which is, uh. Elderly tax relief program appeals, and then also discussion of possible action on open, if it's, is there a motion to go into executive session?
Some moved, second.
Second, let me try your minds, Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Uh, those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Um, so Mitch, uh, just you today or is Joe Spurgeon, uh? And a second, let me try your minds, Selectman Federici?
Aye.
We're taking that as an eye. Uh, those in the room?
Aye.
Uh, during executive session, no motions were made, no action was taken, but as a result of some discussion. Uh, is there a motion to approve the two elderly tax relief appeals that, uh, we discussed?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
Let me try your minds, Selectman Federici? There you go, that's an eye. Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, thank you all. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
As we know, non-debatable. Thank you all. And Lou, uh, thank you for taking time from your vacation.
Absolutely, good meeting, thank you.
Too bad it wasn't billable.
Uh, he was, he was doing multiple, he was, he's recording, huh?
See you later.